Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this special school committee meeting. I'm Christy Boudreau, Chair of the Hatfield School Committee. It's March 25th. It's a little after 7:00. And before we fully come into this session, I just want to start out by acknowledging that tonight, we're all here because of what we hold in common, that our interest is what's best for the students of Hatfield Public Schools. And my hope is we have a night filled with learning tonight, that we keep in mind that we really all have that, that we share. The other thing, I have a few ground rules I want to go over, but before we do that, I want to make sure that anyone who's already sitting either with a microphone on their lapel or in front of a microphone introduces themselves. So we are working on AI-generated note-taking for our minutes, and that actually requires that we all say our names so that it can tell who we are later. And for those who are making public comment, you'll start your public comment out with your name as well, which we would do regardless of AI notes. So I'm Christy Boudreau, Chair.
I'm Kathy Engelhardt, Vice Chair.
Rebecca Bench, School Committee Member.
Jennifer Maloney, School Committee Member.
Adam Sullivan, School Committee Member.
Connor Driscoll, Interim Superintendent and Principal of Smith Academy.
Melissa Petrow.
Principal of Hatfield Elementary.
Molly Bremner, Director of Student Services for Hatfield Public Schools.
Jennifer Charette, Sixth Grade Teacher.
And Megan Bailey, also a Sixth Grade Teacher.
Thank you all. As tonight's meeting is just a little bit different from our typical business meetings, and the sole topic of tonight's agenda is regarding the potential for moving Sixth Grade from Hatfield Elementary to Smith Academy, I really want to set some expectations and also remind us of the policy that dictates our meetings. So tonight's agenda is going to start with a presentation. It's a little unusual that we start with information, but we thought that that would be most helpful, and it's going to be followed by public comment and questions. We're going to be taking notes during that section of comments, and we'll facilitate a question and an answer after that's over. So if you have comments and questions during public comment, it's not a free flow of exchange of ideas at that point. We're going to hold that and then respond at once, and we'll go through all of those. As per our standing practice, if the committee has clarifying questions for administration, we're going to take that before moving forward to public comment. So it won't be a time for discussion, but a time for questions if the committee has them. I want to make sure everyone's clear that there will be no decisions or votes tonight. This is a conversation that's going to continue. This is the first time the committee's hearing the full, sort of, full scope of ideas, so we're learning along with the public. If you would like to speak tonight during the public comment section, please ensure that you've signed up. So there is a sign-up sheet floating around somewhere. It had a pin with it at one point. We will take public comments in the order that they're on the sheet, and we would like to only hear from everyone once before anyone else would come back for a second turn. And again, we don't respond during that public comment, and the committee is not actually, by our policy, wouldn't be allowed to do so. If there's something that needs clarifying, the Chair can ask a clarifying question during public comment. There are a few, there are copies of the policy about public comment that we've put out there in case you want to refresher, but a few highlights. There is a time limit, and if you go over three minutes, we suggest that you, anything else in writing, it's not March Madness, and there is no clock on your shots there. But we will be paying attention so that if someone goes excessively long, we'll ask you to wrap it up. The topics that are available for discussion in public comment are those limited to what's on the agenda for that evening. So tonight's public comment needs to stay focused on Sixth Graders moving from HES to Smith Academy. So if you have comments for other things, tonight is not the night for that, but we do have a business meeting coming in a week. While I highly doubt that there is any need to share this, I will nonetheless inform you that proper conduct and remarks, improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker engages in such conduct, the Chair may terminate the individual's privilege of addressing the group. All remarks need to come through the Chair, and the Chair will acknowledge public commentary and receipts of documents and may seek clarification. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs that concern them, but public session for the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or against any member of the school community. So, that's it. And so, again, I fully anticipate that we're going to have a respectful evening of participation. Should that, for any reason, not be the case, I will offer a reminder of what our expectations are. After that, warning anyone not participating within our policy guidelines will forfeit their right to be heard. Any additional poor behavior will result in the removal of the participant. So, and I think I have principals on hand, if we really, like, they know how to do that work, right? And so, again, I can't imagine that we will ever need that, but better said than not. So with that, I am really pleased to turn this over to Dr. Connor Driscoll.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. It's really nice to see such a turnout for this. It's wonderful to see that involvement. I'd like to start this evening by just kind of walking through the process of where this idea came from, how it originated, and why the timeline is such that it is right now. So as most of you here know, I started in this dual role in January, early January of 2024. As part of entering into the role, I made it a priority to meet with anyone who wanted to meet on staff from either Hatfield Elementary or Smith Academy to kind of talk about things, how things were going, any things that they liked to see shifted or changed or kept the same. And that was just, you know, wide open, just a "how are things going" conversation. I met with the Sixth Grade Team, who's here tonight, on January 29th. During that meeting, when I talked with them, that's when the idea was brought up this year. It had come up in previous years under different administrations, I believe, but this was the first time it was brought up in my role here as Superintendent. Following that conversation with the Sixth Grade Team, I followed up with the administrative team. So I talked to Principal Petrow, Director, Dr. Molly Bremner, and, you know, just to feel out their thoughts on it as well. Following that, I continued the conversation at Smith Academy with our Sixth Grade Team and our Middle School Team to see their thoughts about it. And so, from those conversations, there was some enthusiasm that surrounded the idea, and I thought, okay, this is maybe something we should consider on a broader, in a broader sense. So after that, I contacted the school committee and to let them know that I would be having that conversation with Fifth Grade families. And so, I had, over the course of a couple weeks, conversations either through the phone or through email exchange with all the current Fifth Grade families in the district. And again, that was a conversation to say, hey, this idea is out there. This is, you know, a possibility that could be considered. What are your thoughts on that idea? And so, from those calls and exchanges, we had a number of families, 17, that expressed fairly enthusiastic support. Seven expressed kind of an interest, but not really enthusiastic support, and four expressed pretty vocal opposition. So given that there was such a kind of sense of support in those phone calls, at that point, I talked to the school committee again and said, I think this is worth considering in a, you know, in a much more focused way. We should expand the conversation. And that's when the school committee voted to have a special meeting tonight open to the entire district. And so, that's how we got from there to here, starting in late January, to where we are now, March 25th. So, and again, thank you all for being here. So tonight, we have a few folks from staff who would like to present. We're going to start with the Sixth Grade Team, because they're, you know, we're talking about the Sixth Grade tonight. Following the Sixth Grade Team, we're going to hear from the Middle School Team, kind of about some of the, how things go in the Middle School, some supports that exist, and how we support middle schoolers entering into Smith Academy. And we'll hear briefly about the Fifth, from the Fifth Grade Team, about kind of, you know, the current Fifth Grade, who would be next year's Sixth Grade, about their sense of readiness and maturity for the potential shift. Following that, we'll have, we will be able to kind of continue on with the agenda of public comments, answering any questions from the committee. Okay? All right. So with that, I'm going to help pull up the question up here and turn it over. It should be pulled right up here.
That's me. Now I feel like I'm in therapy.
All right. There you are. All right. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Sixth Grade Team.
Sorry, you awkwardly have to look back. Anyway, again, hi, I'm Megan Bailey. I have been teaching Sixth Grade at Hatfield Elementary for 13 years, officially longer than my students have been alive, which is a little worse, but, you know, that's okay.
I'm Jenny Charette. I have been there for just one extra year than Ms. Bailey here. This is my 14th year in Sixth Grade. Prior to that, I did do two years as an ESP, so I'm an Educational Support Person at Smith Academy, before taking on my classroom at HES. Additionally, I am also a parent of students in the school. I have a current Sixth Grader, which is a unique experience, and I have a Third Grader, and I also am a resident of town.
So when Dr. Driscoll came to us saying that he wanted to meet with everybody just on our concerns and things, this is sort of the thoughts that Ms. Charette and I had for a really long time, just surrounding Sixth Grade's place at the elementary school, kind of things that we've seen, things that we think work, things that we think don't very much work, and sort of how we thought that might actually connect to the current district improvement plan. So the goals of the district and the things that we would like to see for the school and the district as a whole. So we're going to share those thoughts with you now. We do want to keep in mind that this is just our Sixth Grade thoughts. So this is just from our 13, 14 years of experience with Sixth Grade and sort of what we've seen and what we think might be improved by this particular opportunity. Speaking of that district improvement plan, these are sort of the three main tenants and goals of that for the district, which are to reach for excellence, grow enrollment, and to nurture an invested community. Throughout our sort of presentation here, we're going to kind of show you how a lot of this might actually be addressed by this particular change. So first off, thanks to Mrs. Boudreau, who does wonderful things with data, we would like to first point out that there are some major trends to Hatfield's enrollment. At the bottom here, you will see that there are sort of two significant shifts that happen in which where you lose students to other school districts for a lot of different reasons, which we'll talk about in a minute. As you can see, that's highlighted in the yellow. So one of the major shifts in loss in students is really between five to six, then it increases from six to seventh, and then the other major shift is right before high school. So the one that Ms. Charette and I have most experience with, after seeing many of students after a moving up ceremony, and many tiers for where they may be going elsewhere, as you can see with those numbers, is that main shift between that sixth to seventh grade So in all that time, those 13 and 14 years, we've noticed that there have been similarities in the reasons when we do talk to students who have chosen to leave, either heading into Seventh Grade or with connections to families when students are choosing to leave between five and six. And they all kind of fall into these main categories, that they're either looking for a middle school experience or a larger school experience, they're hoping to have more variety in course offerings, they're looking to be involved in after-school or enrichment activities that are provided through the schools. That does include things like sports. And other conflicts also have been start and end times for working families. So this is just the overview. We're going to talk about each one of these more in-depth with the next slides. So the first thing that I think is our number-one priority when we're thinking about how to serve students is how can we improve continuity and alignment and implementation of the Sixth through Eighth Grade standards? If you look at the Massachusetts frameworks, the way that standards are grouped are early ed, then there is a, like, intermediate elementary school level, and then there was a Sixth through Eight Middle School level. So the standards that we are actively teaching in Sixth Grade at the elementary school setting are middle school expectations and middle school standards. One of the greatest places that we feel like can be improved by going up to the middle school setting is being able to have a more equitable time on learning through all of those standards. One of our big sticking points right now is that we are both responsible for teaching either social studies or science. We've done our best to departmentalize at the elementary school level, and right now, we're expected to teach standards that would take, you know, 45 minutes to 50 minutes a day, a block schedule like in the middle school. And the way an elementary school schedule is often run is that time isn't available to be allotted to science and social studies. So we would really feel like this would give the opportunity to have a little more rigor in our instruction and more time on learning for what is expected from those frameworks. Additionally, we often are the odd man out in the elementary school as a Sixth Grade Middle School Team when it comes to things like professional development and programming. I can't tell you the number of times I've sat through a professional development in the last 14 years, and they say, okay, you're a K through five school. And then I'm sitting there like, tell me you have something for Sixth Grade. Tell me you have something that connects to my standards, my curriculum, what is important. We are often left out of that elementary school structure. Usually, thank you to administrative team, we are able to find something that can fill that hole or can meet that need, but it would be wonderful to have more continuity and collaboration with the other professionals that are teaching similarly to us. More opportunity going forward at Smith Academy, potentially for co-taught or special education push-in into classes. That's a model that we've been building on in our transition meetings between Sixth Grade and Seventh Grade, and with additional licensed teachers up at that setting, it would allow for that to potentially be a more successful model. Also, the idea of being able to distribute students a little more equitably throughout the special ed programming. At this point, we have a similar number of teachers at both buildings, but the caseload at the elementary school is different from the caseload at the high school, and it would just be being able to reallocate those resources, people, time, materials, space, in a different way, that could better meet the need of what we've talked a lot about, especially like the group of students that we currently have. We feel like the needs could be met differently if they were within a setting like that. Increase of course offering, academic rigor, X blocks. Our students in Sixth Grade are curious, and they are thankfully looking forward to learning new and exciting things, and those opportunities at the elementary school aren't really available to them for things that are age-appropriate. When it comes to things like, I'm thankful that we've added the enrichments for after school, and we have specifically added things that we knew Sixth Graders wanted. D and D is an example, cheerleading is an example. But prior to, like, when we first started to talk about this, those weren't opportunities that they had, and I think that they're really important to the social development and the academic development of students. The last thing, I have heads in my way now, access to more developmentally appropriate SEL and behavioral support staff. So we do use a program at the elementary school that is, we use Second Step in Sixth Grade. Is it Second Step also, or is it Step to Respect? Oh, that was the old one, right?
Yeah, that was your one.
Second. So we do have a program. It goes, I believe, K through five, and then we specifically did get the Sixth Grade and Middle School version, and it has made a world of difference, I think, in the conversations that we're having around SEL at the Sixth Grade level. But it would be wonderful if there was some continuity between that throughout the building as well. So, once again, we do, we have done our best over the last years to create what we think is a developmentally appropriate model for the Sixth Graders in an elementary school. Just so you know a little bit what currently happens, we are departmentalized, meaning Megan teaches math and science, I teach social studies and English, we do mix the kids up into different groups, and they switch between our classrooms. We are trying to teach them those executive functioning skills and organizational skills to be able to navigate a middle school model, also helping them to learn how to interact with different teachers more regularly, learn the different expectations of different classrooms, all of that scaffolding that I think is really important. But sometimes it feels like we're fighting against an elementary school, and what are the expectations there, and they do change as students get a little bit older. Yep. Just to piggyback off of what Jenny was just talking about, I think that we've worked really hard over the years to create a middle school model at the elementary school, but as she mentioned, we're kind of actively fighting against it versus working naturally into a system that already exists. We've done pretty good at artificially creating that, but then the second those students sort of leave our classroom door, they're right back into an elementary school sort of setting with different expectations. So, you know, that's one thing to just keep in mind. Additionally, we have, this is always a huge sticking point for families who often leave or because of the opportunities available after school and for sports, that obviously being part of an elementary school, they just don't have access to unless they do their own sort of rec or things outside of that. Some of those things with an increased population at Smith Academy could increase the offerings in clubs, that include the ability to have an intermediate band. So one of the things that has been discussed is the thought of actually expanding the band program, so that they could actually have a, quote, beginner band of four, five at the elementary school, then an actual intermediate band of six through eight, and then obviously the high school band offerings would stay unchanged. But that would actually be a great opportunity to be able to actually include even more students in that. Also, expand or create middle school slash JV sports teams and have more opportunity for students to practice those skills to even better, you know, the high school teams. The ability to participate in more age-appropriate activities, as Ms. Charette was saying, a lot of things that the elementary school plays or all-school meetings or things are often geared towards the middle, to younger students. And the Sixth Graders, you know, whenever we go up to Smith Academy to participate in some of their pep rallies, their homecomings, see what their clubs are offering, they're always so excited and, you know, want to be involved in those things, and we would love for them to have that opportunity. And also, another sort of benefit to them being up at Smith Academy earlier would be to create longer time at Smith Academy before potentially considering another big shift. So as it currently stands, there's that big shift between sixth and seventh, and everybody makes some sort of choice whether to go up to Smith Academy or to go somewhere else. Then they only have two years at Smith Academy before having to make another potential big decision about where they might want to go for high school. This creates three years, so a much larger chunk of time for them to sort of settle into Smith Academy, create some loyalty to the school before having to make another big decision. They may still make that decision, but at least they'd have some longer time to think about it before needing to be forced into that. Lastly, you know, we've talked a lot about how this may benefit the students moving up to Smith Academy and how this may benefit Smith Academy, but this might also have some pretty helpful benefits to the elementary school as well. Currently, we have a very tight space in our building. Pretty much every little nook and cranny is used by someone for something, and we are, you know, potentially alleviating some of those space burdens, freeing up two entire classrooms, allowing for some shift of, you know, personnel in the building to alleviate some of that that's currently there. As Ms. Charette said, too, there might be a decrease and shift in the workloads and sort of caseloads of the special ed and intervention services and size at HES, expanding that obviously through different people at different buildings. Also, increase specialist offerings. So with our current, you know, art, gym, music, et cetera, they would have two entire extra periods that they could offer something for the additional students who are still at HES. This could be simple as, you know, coverage opportunities, but this also could be new course offerings, a second gym class a week, you know, that kind of a thing for the students that are already there, that frees them up to do those sorts of things. And then lastly, and this is a minor one, but not necessarily to the students, sometimes it seems, it would alleviate some of the overcrowdings that we currently have with some of the bigger lunches, some of the bigger recesses. You could make it maybe just two grades per thing and that kind of thing to alleviate that. And that's what we have. So those are our kind of summary of thoughts. Obviously, this isn't everything, but these are kind of the big ideas that, over the course of the 13 or 14 years we've been doing this, we've kind of seen and think that this might be an opportunity to fix that, so. And as there's been so much conversation over the last few years about where public education is going and how our town is going to respond to the differing needs, it seems like this could be a place, Sixth Grade, could be a place where we can start addressing those needs that could benefit both the elementary school and the high school, and I think it's absolutely appropriate for Sixth Graders to be that spot, as they are right there in the middle, and are able to, will be successful, I believe, at that level with the middle school.
Do you have questions at the moment?
I'd like to continue with hearing from the next.
I just have one clarifying question, if I may. The both of you that are currently teaching Sixth Grade, would you be going with the Sixth Graders and continuing teaching up there, or are you having other roles at the elementary school?
That would be our goal. We would like to continue to Sixth Grade at the middle school level, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much for preparing that. I think we've heard from the Sixth Grade Team, and if we have members from the Middle School Team at Smith Academy who'd like to come on up and speak a little bit to how we support transition and, you know, what that experience is like, we could do that. And I think we can probably turn the headlights off if.
Yeah.
It's all blinding the public.
I'm Emily Case, middle school team leader and science teacher. I've been a teacher at Smith Academy since 1997 and team leader since 2005. And I had a more professional outfit picked out, but it was beach day at school today, and with all those kids at a beach, somebody had to be a lifeguard, so here I am. I wanted to start with the what and why of middle school. The concept of middle school took hold in the early 1970s as an alternative to junior high schools. Junior high schools are what they sound like, high school for younger teens and tweens. Middle schools across the US most often serve grades six through eight. At their best, these programs offer academic depth with developmentally appropriate support. The elements of a middle school program that allow us to do this include professional collaboration, partnerships with families, a competency-based education model, and integrating social and emotional learning within the academic day. As far as professional collaboration, what it looks like for us is regular team meetings. We have a close working relationship among the special education teacher, the regular ed teachers, and the school psychologists, and a lot of that happens at the team meetings, and some of it happens on the fly when we cross paths in the hallway. We collaborate so that we have common expectations and policies related to students' academic habits and skills. We make interdisciplinary connections, whether reinforcing knowledge and skills across classrooms or engaging in formal cross-curricular lessons or units. And we also collaborate to adjust schedules and plans to maximize academic time and experiences. Why Sixth? The middle school team and the Sixth Grade Teachers have worked hard to collaborate. We've taken steps to align our policies and learning standards, as you heard from Jenny and Megan. Transition meetings between Sixth and Seventh Grade each school year have helped us get a head start on meeting the needs of rising Seventh Graders, but sharing the same space and schedule would afford us many more opportunities to make connections across grade levels and create a more robust bridge between elementary school and high school. As far as family partnerships, in the middle school, we have weekly communications that go home about learning goals and class activities. We have an advisory program, and the advisors provide an easy point of contact for families who want to check in or ask questions. We make ourselves available for meetings. We make ourselves available for meetings on an as-needed basis for parents and guardians, either in person or online. And we work with families on the transition to more independence and responsibility. That's the hallmark of this age, and that is definitely not a one-size-fits-all journey. So, a lot of collaboration and partnership goes into that. Why sixth for family partnerships? The transition from elementary to middle school is not just a student experience, it's a whole family experience. If you've been through it, it's a whole family. Two-way communication is key, and we have communication structures in place in the middle school now, but we'd work with the sixth grade teachers to expand those as necessary to provide optimal support to the sixth graders and their families. Our competency-based education program is a way of maintaining high standards for all students based in the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks that Jenny referenced. We differentiate based on entry points and pace of learning while having the same end goal in mind for all students. It's a good model for any age, but it's absolutely essential in the middle school when brains are changing more than any other time in one's life, save only infancy. Sixth graders are ready for content specialization, including more time for science and social studies, where they can apply the literacy and quantitative skills that they learn in ELA and math. They benefit from consistent instructional and assessment practices while teachers deliberately build skills across grade levels. Examples of academic skills that we can develop across grades include research skills, data analysis, writing, and reading comprehension. The fourth piece is social-emotional learning. Like many schools, we are increasingly integrating social-emotional learning into our curriculum. The social-emotional competencies include many skills I've already referenced here, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Sixth graders will benefit from the support that the integration of social-emotional competencies offers, but are also navigating a more complex internal and external landscape as far as their social and emotional lives. In this area, too, they are ready for more independence and responsibility with developmentally appropriate and differentiated supports. We can offer this through our advisory and academic programs and also have many, many positive role models among our older students. In my experience, one area where families of incoming middle school students occasionally express concern relates to interactions between middle schoolers and older students. At Smith Academy, the vast majority of these interactions are positive, but it is an area where it's worth taking care. We have separate bathrooms for middle school and high school students, and they spend most of their day in a separate area of the building. Should the sixth graders move up to Smith Academy, we would take the opportunity to revisit our space and policies to ensure their safety and comfort, and we would welcome input and questions. In summary, the middle school team universally supports moving sixth grade to Smith Academy. We believe it would better serve our middle school students' academic, social, and emotional needs, and we are confident that our program can offer them challenging academics with developmentally appropriate support. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Wall. I'm the middle school social studies teacher at Smith Academy, and I've been teaching there since 2009. I'd like to express my support for having the sixth grade move to Smith Academy because I believe we'll expand the ability of the public schools to provide a more substantive middle school experience for students. In 2016, the state of Massachusetts redid the social studies curriculum frameworks, and they turned the sixth grade and seventh grade curriculum into a part one and a part two of a course. By having the sixth grade at Smith Academy, it would allow Jenny and myself to be able to collaborate and coordinate that two-part course into a single course as the state has recommended schools do. In the time that I've worked as a middle school teacher at Smith Academy, we've worked really hard to create a separate middle school within the whole Smith Academy. We've developed policies that focus around what is developmentally appropriate for middle school students, and I think it would be really important for us to be able to continue that with the sixth grade teachers as well. In the past, we've met with Jenny and Megan once or twice a year to talk about policies, but you really can't create a program by having meetings once or twice a year. It's really, as a middle school team, we meet once or twice a week, and we're working on policies and trying to coordinate together, and even then, we could use more time to meet and work on those policies. Many larger school districts have a middle school model that encompasses either sixth through eight or five through eight, and as we've worked to create our own middle school, I think having more grades involved would help to benefit Hatfield as well. On a side note to this, I'm also the parent of a current eighth grade student at Smith Academy. My son has been in the Hatfield Public School since kindergarten, and as a parent, I fully support this change as well. His time at Hatfield Elementary School was great, and we really enjoyed having him at the elementary school, but by the time students are in sixth grade, they're ready to move out of an elementary school into a middle school model as well. Having whole school activities such as Spirit Week and March Madness, which is going on right now, are fully developmentally and appropriately fun for students' grades, sixth grade up through high school, and it would be great to have them there to participate in that. As a parent, I am hopeful that by moving the sixth grade to Smith Academy, it would allow students at HES to have more offerings of specials throughout their years while they're at Hatfield Elementary School. As a parent, that was my biggest concern. Having art once a week, having music once a week was not enough time to develop any sort of skill or appreciation for those. I can imagine as a teacher trying to teach art or music once a week, by the time they come back the following week, you're starting all over again. There's no continuity there, whereas if they are meeting twice a week, they'd have the ability to do that. I would love to see students increase the number of times per week that they have specials, and by making this move, it may be able to do that. Thank you very much.
Are there any clarifying questions from the committee? I have, I have one. Do you have something you want to?
I was just thinking, it might be helpful for folks to hear kind of like what the day in the life of a middle school student looks like, kind of just start to finish, if you wouldn't mind. Do you want to?
Yeah. Students start their day in Home Nest. We call it as the first five minutes of the day. I love Home Nest. I love sending all the kids out the door, having checked in. Do you have a pencil? Do you have your stuff? What periods do you have first? Are you, are you, do you need anything? You look a little tired this morning. Even just that five minutes, just to notice who's looking a little off or who needs to that extra pencil this morning, really helpful. And then the schedule rotates. It's the same as the high school schedule, but they'll go to their first two blocks, and we have our core academics generally speaking in the first four, the A, B, C, D blocks. There's a little twist rotation there, but that's where they generally fall. They go to their first two blocks, and then they come back to advisory. We do the second steps, so the sixth, seventh, and eighth program for second step. I second what they said. It's really a nice program. I had my advisory spontaneously start talking about what their, what lesson they found most interesting, and they're definitely getting a lot of important information there. But that's not every day. We get a couple days off and we'll just chat or we'll play a game for about 15 minutes. And then they go to their next two classes, and then they have lunch together, and then the last two classes of the day. So, it's two classes break, two classes break, two classes end of the day. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think it covers pretty well. The exception being Genius Hour is a period that we have specific to the middle school that meets once every seven days, which is a self-directed learning time for students where they're able to pursue their own opportunities that they'd like. Currently, I have a small group of students who are creating their own play, and it's fantastic. They've been collaborating, creating roles for each other, they've developed the entire script for the play, they've chosen who their audience is going to be. So, it's a great opportunity for them to pursue things that they wouldn't typically have in other classes. And then also, once every seven days, they have X blocks, which is like a club period during the school day, and different teachers offer a wide range of different activities for students to participate during those as well. So, I think those are two really nice things for middle school students to be able to participate in.
And they love those days. I've had kids say, "Oh, I was sick today and I wasn't going to come in, but there's an activity today," so.
Can you give a few examples of what's an X block?
So, I run an X block for strategy games where kids play a variety of different board games. Dr. Driscoll runs a fly fishing group where he takes them out to go fly fishing. There are kids who do Dungeons and Dragons, kids who do chess club, there's.
Minecraft?
Minecraft coding. It's also.
Some bands.
Some jazz band. It's also an opportunity in higher high school periods where students can take AP labs and that sort of stuff as well.
So, can I clarify? How many core teachers in the middle school team right now?
So, we have, we have four, one for each subject area. What I'm assuming, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would continue on with our seventh and eighth, and Jenny and Megan would continue on with the sixth, doing the two blocks and the two blocks. But we would have, we would have them in our team meetings, we would have an opportunity to collaborate, you know, on the curriculum. Is that what you're thinking, too?
Yep.
So, you wouldn't necessarily have sixth graders in your science class?
Correct. I might have them in an activity block or a Genius Hour.
Okay.
The other thing the seventh grade offers now, and I would envision this as part of sixth grade, too, is what's called the enrichment block. So, they, you know, as part of the transition to middle school, oftentimes, you know, we see that some students need a little more support in some skills, whether they are ELA skills, math skills, science skills, just kind of general study skills, organizational skills, just those, the skills that are required when you have a little more independence and a little more responsibility that comes with that independence. And so, for our, for our middle schoolers, our, now our incoming middle schoolers of seventh grade, and it would be, you know, sixth grade as well, we offer an enrichment time where those skills are practiced and, you know, and deepened so they can better access learning in middle school.
Anything else you guys want to ask of the middle school team?
Just a quick question on X blocks. Do X blocks span the whole school? So, like chess club, is it middle school chess, or is it like we have seventh graders playing chess with eleventh and twelfth graders and?
Yeah, X blocks span the whole school, but some are only open to certain grade levels, and Genius Hour is just the middle school. So, it's just one block in the seven-day rotation where we have mixed grades. They're pretty small groups generally speaking. So, for example, I know I have a seventh grader who just went into chess club with older students, and is having a really nice, nice time of it. It's a small, well-supervised group.
Anything else? I guess I'm going to take the opportunity to ask the two concerns I've heard most commonly. One being a concern about younger middle schoolers might face bullying from older kids, if you can speak to your experience with that. And the other, sort of the opposite end of this, is romance between very young students and much older students. So, can you speak to that?
So.
I've heard it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a legitimate concern. So, most of students' days are with their own age group. There's seventh and eighth grade mixing and art and band and some skills blocks, but most of their classes are with their own age group. Lunch is seventh and eighth grade, so that one day out of the seven-day rotation with the X blocks is the one time that we would have much older students potentially with sixth graders. But that is something that we'd have to meet and get community input on is how to, you know, how far to open that up to folks. In my experience at Smith Academy, I have, so that's a lot of years now, I have, I don't think I've seen high school students. If I have seen high school students pulling middle school students, it's been very rare. Most of our interpersonal concerns are within the grade level because that's where they spend most of their time. So, we, we don't see a lot. We've seen some eighth to ninth, you know? They don't have a lot of opportunity. When, when high school students are lurking in our hallway, they're sent away. And, you know, as far as like much older students, that would be something we would have our eyes wide open to, yeah.
I'll say, from personal experience with my eighth grader, he's been in art class as a seventh grader with eighth grade students, checking with them, and I'm like, "Hey, have you ever spoken to so-and-so?" They're in your art class, and it's like, "No, they're in a different grade." Why would I speak to them? And I'm like, "You have similar interests, you're in the same class together, why don't you go speak to them?" And they're like, "No, they're in a different grade." We sit at our table, we don't interact with them. And it's, I, as a teacher, always assumed, like, we're a small school, seventh and eighth grade, they're at lunch together, they must be socializing together, and he's like, "No, I'm with my students, I'm with my friends, and we stick together." So, for me, it was a surprise to see, when I experienced it firsthand, he was not all about meeting all the other kids in that art room with him, and that's my one personal experience that I've had with it. But I don't think it's an uncommon experience, the exception probably being sports teams where the interactions are significantly greater, but this would allow for a more substantial middle school sports team experience as well.
I was going to follow up on the sports, which maybe is where you were going to go. Where do we anticipate sixth grade eligibility for sports? Are they going to be opening up into JV, which seems like a stretch, or is it would just like, would it only be middle school eligibility? Or would it be they aren't eligible for anything and we're going to rely upon rec as their sports opportunity?
That's a great question. That was one that was brought up by a lot of parents of fifth graders as well. So, the MIAA policy reads that if students attend a middle school that is in the same physical space, the same building, and under the same supervision of the same principal, they're eligible for sports. So, it may look slightly different depending on the season. I'm thinking about like the fall season where, you know, all the fall sports we have require 11, you know, 11 students per sport. It may be difficult to field a, you know, like a full middle school girls soccer team and full middle school girls field hockey team. So, in that case, we might, we might talk to rec and see, you know, how we can, how we can make that work so they have the option at Smith Academy for sports or practice as well as for rec, where, you know, we would, we would figure that one out. In terms of basketball and spring sports, we believe that we would have enough students to run middle school, for basketball, we would have enough to run a robust middle school program, JV and varsity program. And at the, in the spring, we believe we would have enough to run a middle school slash JV and varsity program. So, what that, what that means is that, so, you know, in the middle school slash JV, you might have, you know, sixth through eighth grade students, or if a ninth grade student's never played before and they want to play, they could play primarily a middle school schedule, potentially with JV games where the ninth graders play as well. It would also allow us to have, to really develop our program deeper. So, we would have the ability to have a middle school program where some eighth graders or seventh graders who were really excelling to be able to play up into the, either the JV or varsity level, and that would allow us to develop that younger middle school program, too.
If you had a choice between a middle school and a varsity, like, let's say field hockey or soccer. If you had a choice between having middle school and varsity or JV and varsity, where would you prefer that split to have? As a parent, I'm thinking if I have a sixth grader, I don't want them on JV, anything.
Sure. Yeah, no, and we've heard that a lot as well. I think right now, I would prefer the JV/varsity split because I think that opens more opportunities up for students. We wouldn't have, we would never put a sixth grader in a, in a position where they would potentially be going up against a, like a, an 18-year-old. That would be, would be dangerous. But you typically. But you typically don't have juniors and seniors in our division that are playing on the JV team. You know, you're typically seeing, you know, ninth graders, maybe some 10th graders, and a lot of middle school players on the JV teams that we play. Because, you know, the, a number of schools that we play are in the same boats as us. They sometimes struggle to field a full middle school team. But they may have a middle school team with two or three ninth graders. And so that would require JV, you know, a JV schedule, even though it could be, you know, played mostly among middle school. And our AD, Mr. Duncan couldn't be here tonight, but he would be able to field more of those questions and kind of explain how he's worked through that in the scheduling that we already do. I'd like to go back to one thing that Ms. Case had mentioned before too, about the concern that was brought about older students bullying our younger students, our sixth-grade students. In the time that I've been there, which doesn't go back very far, there's certainly a lot, folks have been there a lot longer than I have. I have yet to field a bullying complaint from middle, high school towards middle school. I routinely see our high school students shut down anything like that when they have the opportunity. So on sports teams, during clubs, during those X Blocks, that's a time when our high school students shine and they set the example. And if they see it happening, they're able to, they address it in a way that is a lot more impactful than if I were to address her, we were. And that happens on the day, you know, very routinely. We can count on our older students to act in that way.
Do we have more presenters?
I, you know, I would like to give fifth grade, our fifth grade teachers the opportunity if they'd like to speak about the, what they would say is fifth grade readiness, if you'd like to.
Ms. Case, could you turn the lights on for that section while you're, oh, thank you?
Okay, I don't have a speech or anything planned. I just thought I was going to answer a question or two. My name's Ted Pryser, fifth-grade teacher. Five years I've been in Hatfield. I'm not a parent, so it's hard for me to talk to parents about how they should be with their kids. But the biggest takeaway, I guess, is you're probably thinking, "My kid right now is not ready to go to sixth grade." But in eight months, you might have a completely different kid at home. I see it, like, right now, we have snack for fifth grade and boys sit here, girls sit here. They don't even talk to each other. Then you fast forward to the fifth graders I had last year in sixth grade and they might be at their lockers, spraying perfume. Or a boy might put a little too much cologne on before he leaves for school. So they're a completely different kid from fifth to sixth. Will kids be nervous, probably not ready maturity-wise for sixth grade at Smith Academy, maybe? For the first few months, but I also see sixth graders for five years and other behavior in sixth grade. They're bored at recess. Their body language, you can read it at all school meetings. Everything is geared towards little kids and they're just ready to grow up. So I think making this move would benefit the kids and maybe all of them. It might not go super smoothly, but in time, it really is only a year difference. I think it'll help our school with more room. And I just think sixth graders being around kindergartners, first graders is more concerning to me than seniors being around sixth or seventh graders. So I think, though you might be nervous, and again, I'm not a parent, but I would send my cat to Smith Academy for sixth grade. I think in the long run, it's going to work out, but it's just going to be hard to see at first. But, I mean, we've, I'll let you.
Well, you can worry about Greg.
You're a parent, you have...
I am a parent. My name's Johnny Gary. I teach fifth grade. I've taught since 2001, so 20-something years. I actually coached Jenny and Becca a long, long time ago on the soccer team. So anyway, I think there's, like, I've been thinking of, like, there's three main points that I think would benefit the kids. And I also have three kids. I have a seventh grader, an eighth grader, and a junior at the, at Smith Academy. I think academically, Jenny and Megan made a lot of good points, and Emily and Kevin. There's more opportunity for growth as far as the X Blocks, having band each day or multiple art classes, whatever that may be. So that would be a benefit, which I think fifth graders turning to sixth graders would really benefit from. Socially, also, having a little bit of an expanded opportunity to meet people. So I feel like my kids personally, you know, they've, they haven't been bullied or anything. They've actually made friends with kids from different grades through X Block or through sports. And then also, the third point would be space, or space at, the elementary school is really, really limited right now. So it would open up a lot more space for us. But I think, I don't know, I think it would, all in all, be a good, positive thing for sixth graders because they are a little bit out of place at the elementary school.
The first few months might be rough, but I think, long-term, it'll work out just from what we see with the sixth graders at Hatfield. They're ready to be seventh, eighth, ninth graders by January for sure.
So a clarifying question for Dr. Driscoll. We've heard about space at the elementary school. Is there space at Smith Academy to do this change?
There is. We've looked at the middle school hallway where it is, and there are a couple classrooms that, they're in use right now. The space could be shared and the schedule could be shifted to allow that, the, these supports that are provided in those rooms to be provided in a different way that would still provide adequate support.
Thank you. So with that, unless there's anything...
Can I just ask?
Yes, please.
One thing?
Absolutely.
I just, because I am a very concrete person, I just would like to, just one more time, just hear really clearly. I think we heard a lovely description of scaffolding at the sixth grade and like how that is, like, people are, you know, students are being prepared for the middle school experience. And then seventh and eighth is working really well together. But just to clarify, if the sixth grade were to move up to Smith Academy, they would continue that same scaffolding or does that get passed down to fifth grade? And now fifth grade is doing it, does that make sense? Like, on a daily basis, what is that going to look like? Those same scaffolds and supports in sixth grade in elementary school, is that going to be mimicked then in the middle school?
Yeah, I'd say it would be mimicked and expanded upon. So, you know, the, as Megan and Jenny were sharing, they do try to kind of departmentalize and teach, you know, different subjects at different times. But we'd be able to do that in a kind of a more realistic way in the sixth grade just because the schedule and the model allows for that to happen.
But they would be teaching the same things? So basically the same program, but in a new location with better coordination, more opportunities? And then when students went to seventh grade, they would have the other four teachers?
Yep. Yeah, and that's, and again, this is a conversation that we're having now, before we make the decision. So I'd want to sit down with the whole middle school team if the decision were made, including the sixth grade team, to say, you know, how can we, how can we look at the schedule and make it the best that it can possibly be? So just thinking right now, yes, that's where I would land right now. But it may be that we get to that conversation and the team says, "Well, what about this? You know, wouldn't this be, allow for, you know, wouldn't X allow for Y to happen? And if we can do that and use the schedule and the team to better serve our students, then I wouldn't want to, I don't want to prematurely make the scheduling decision without considering those factors." So I'd want to have that conversation first.
But the general plan would be to like keep that same sort of like transi, transitionary, like, approach in the sixth grade, just in a new location?
Yes.
And how would that impact how fifth grade is taught?
Well, currently, the two fifth-grade teachers switch for science and social studies, but they have been begging me to be doing more departmentalization. So that could potentially open up that conversation to be a bigger one.
Still thinking about it.
Yeah.
So they only currently switch for those two subjects, just?
Yes.
And you would prefer to do more?
We've talked about it a little bit the last few years.
And you think fifth grade is ready for that?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
I think if we were teaching the same subject twice a day, it would make us better teachers. We'd learn from our mistakes and we'd be able to change it before we make the same mistake again. I just, I've been at two other school districts and even in the elementary, like, third grade, fourth grade, they were doing that. So usually when people ask me, "What do you teach?" I teach fifth grade. "Yeah, but what do you teach?" I teach fifth grade. "Yeah, but what?" I go, "Everything." They're like, "What?" It's just, I feel like, you know, we would just be doing what everyone else is doing. We're not doing anything new, so I think it'd be a good thing for us to do that.
I hear a lot of, I think, I think, I believe, I know, versus I know. And I'm wondering, what do we know about how a sixth grade performs in a sixth-through-eight setting versus how a sixth grade performs in a K-through-six setting? Do we have any concrete data?
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's one study that really has been done. And the study has some pretty significant limitations. So this is a study done from Duke University and it was a meta-analysis of discipline data and performance on standardized tests. That study found that there's a correlation between increased disciplinary issues when sixth graders are in a middle school setting and decreased test scores. So that study is there and it exists. And it was, it was a fairly comprehensive study in North Carolina. But that kind of study itself is, it's, it's hard to, hard to say that that would be indicative of every middle school. The meta-analysis ignores the anomalies, the outliers. So when you have, when you have a district that just makes the change to go for it without, you know, having heard from teachers or set, you know, set supports in place, that's lumped in with a district that does it really well. And there are examples of middle schools with the middle school model that excel. And so those, you know, the, I think the better question to ask would be, what makes those models do well? The schools that are doing well, that have, you know, again, it's hard to say, you know, high test scores equal doing school well necessarily. But those schools, the ones that are excelling, what are they doing that makes it go well? And I think you've heard tonight a lot of the things that can make it go well. When you have a team that works together, that has time to meet about each student, that meets routinely over the course of the week to talk about academic issues, to talk about student challenges, to talk about social, emotional issues that might be going on. When you have, when you have a group of teachers that can utilize the model that is the real middle school model to benefit students. And I think we're well-pleased to do that. That's, that makes, that makes the difference, rather than just having, you know, just having kids switch class, right? That's not a middle school model. The middle school model is a teamed approach to make sure that every student's getting what they need. And I think that model will serve us well if we make the change.
Connor, did I miss it? Did you say what year that meta-analysis was published?
I believe it was 2006. So that was, you know, it's a, an older study, but I think, you know, I think it's worth recognizing.
And that's, I'm just thinking, there's so many, like, you guys were talking about, like, middle school broadly has expanded since that time to fifth in a lot of places, so.
Would there be any benefit for us to take an additional year to find out what works well for other schools to make sure we hit it well? Or do you think, do you feel like we're rushing this in any way?
I don't. I think, I feel like we started the conversation now to be poised to do that. You know, I think, I think, you know, it would be good to take some time to hear from, hear from everyone who's got a vested interest in it. But to make the decision sooner rather than later so that we have time to transition, I would not want to be having this conversation in May or June about making this change. I don't know that a whole year would be required to see what our middle school already does really well. I mean, that's, that's, I can't speak highly about, enough about that team. They do a really fantastic job. And I think they would be the models that we could look at to see what, you know, how can a, how can a middle school model work well? And we have that right now.
I'd like to make sure we have ample time to hear from folks who came. So with that, we're going to pull a microphone up and put a chair so somebody can come and sit and we can speak one at a time. Did the sign-up sheet make it around? Is there, are there names on the sign-up sheet? I guess I should double-check that. Yeah, I'm still going to ask you to sign up for the question. Would it make sense to have the speaker go to the table on that mic? And then the camera might easier to hear. However, John was... I just didn't know. He's ready. Okay. But there's the jump seat, the hot seat. He had prepped the mic, so. So can you hand that up so we can hear who's on there first? I don't want to stop anyone from signing up. I just want to make sure that we're... Were you going to sign?
Yes, I was, but...
Go ahead and sign. But just, why don't you let us know who's up first?
It's John Margolis.
Okay.
Jen, sorry.
Sorry about that, everyone. I apologize. Jen Margolis, I have a second and a fourth grader, and I'm also the current PTA president. Just to comment on what I've heard, it just sounds like we're trying to do things that fit the adult situation and we're not really thinking as much about what's going to benefit our kids in the financial situation. It sounds like the fifth, sixth team could be team-teaching and rotating classes. They could be zooming in or talking with the seventh and eighth grade teachers and talking about curriculum and plans and, you know, all these different things and having that middle school model without jumping into these changes that feel very rushed and very unnerving. I just want to start with a personal experience of someone who went to a seventh-through-12th school, who as a seventh and eighth grader played all JV and varsity sports with juniors, seniors, post-graduates. It's going to happen 100%, whether you're playing Dungeons and Dragons or basketball or soccer. You're going to have a huge mesh of kids mixing together. And so I really do not think 11-year-olds should go to high school. And it's not about us. It's about what's the best thing for the kids. We do not have a separate middle school. No one is saying this. There is a middle school model. It works. We do not have a middle school. We do not have a separate middle school. And I have yet to hear of a sixth-through-12th grade school, period. And I don't know why we're trying to reinvent the wheel to try to deal with adult situations and not thinking about what's best for the kids. Smith Academy, if just focuses on what they do really well and being almost a small, public-private school, then I think everything is going to work itself out. I've asked friends who had kids in the middle school, at Smith Academy, the high school. They say there isn't a separation, that people use the same bathrooms, that they do interact with the other kids. Greenfield locally felt that eighth graders, they had eighth through 12th together, felt that it was a disaster and said they weren't emotionally mature enough. We kept talking about brain changes and things in sixth grade. They're sending their eighth graders back to middle school and they had the fifth through seventh graders and figured out that the fifth graders... seventh graders and figured out that the fifth graders were not emotionally ready to be with the middle schoolers and are sending them back. That's locally. So if you don't want to quote the other study. So if you are quoting experts and not just ums and I think, and it would be great if this happened, and let's try it out with our kids, their physical body changes, and this is from experts, are occurring and kids need time to process them. They're much more susceptible for peer pressure. They're going through emotional and hormonal and physical changes. Sixth graders in a middle school setting get lower grades and have more behavioral issues, as Connor and Adam said from the Duke study. The sports clubs, everything is going to be integrated and not physically separated. It's a critical time for these kids to transition from childhood to adolescence. And let them grow self-confidence. Let them become leaders at HES and mature. Have the curriculum work between fifth and eighth grade, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, whatever, work on it together. We live in a world where we can communicate really easily in Zoom. I know half the classes at Set the Cattery are on Zoom from what I hear these days. But most importantly, let's stop rushing our kids to grow up and help them navigate these situations and do what's best for them and not thinking about the bottom line of what's happening in budgeting, because budgeting is an issue everywhere. Look at the front page of the Gazette with every school district. And I appreciate everyone's input, but I have to be concerned about what's best for our kids. And that's, my number one priority is my children. And I think they deserve a chance to be kids. And I hope everyone thinks about that and not about what's going to make our lives easier. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes. So Chris Reno, Mountain Road. I appreciate all the perspective from the teachers. It's been really helpful. I come at this a little bit differently, I think. I, I view this as a positive opportunity for these kids to expand their palate, if you will. You know, we have one son, Casey, who's in fifth grade right now. He's had the opportunity to, to work with the drama club at, at Smith Academy. It's been really positive. He's worked with older kids. I, I think, as, as Connor had mentioned, you know, I think we, we're approaching this negatively in a lot of ways, that you've got to assume that older kids will, will help along the younger kids. We're seeing that already. I recognize there's, there's guardrails that have to be established, right? We want safety for the kids. You have to, you have to make sure that they, they, they're age appropriate, if you will, because there's some, obviously some exposures out there. But I think it's a really good thing. I think it's, I think there's opportunity out there for the kids to just expand out and see what other academic exposures they can have. So I guess, from my perspective, I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Kristen?
I'm good.
Okay. Melissa?
Hi, I'm Melissa Zimmer. I have a fourth grader at Hatfield Elementary School. And I appreciated you raising the, the Duke study. And I have an analogy that is imperfect. My employer, this last year changed our website because all of us who worked there had so many complaints with the website. And we did this whole analysis of what wasn't working and what could be improved, and we changed our website. And all of the things that were problematic have been resolved and we have a long list of new problems. And so that is my question, is what are the new, like, I hear a very compelling argument about what's not working and what needs to be changed in order to make it work. But my question is, what are the new problems that would emerge? And I read that same Duke study. And so that was what I was going to ask about, the lower test scores and the increased behavioral discipline concerns that were raised in that study. But I also read this thing from Harvard Education School. It's called, Do Middle Schools Make Sense?, the Graduate School of Education at Harvard. And they, they cite that study as well. And they also say that many communities in Massachusetts and other places are reconsidering the middle school model and moving, I don't know anything about this, I'm reporting on this article, moving to K through eight schools with a lower school and an upper school in order to provide, in order to provide differential development, lower, like, you know, through third grade, fourth through, or whatever, I don't know how they divide it up. But a lower school and an upper school in an elementary model, and then moving to high school in the ninth grade. And obviously, the building stone exists to do that. But it makes me wonder about, why are some schools, including Cambridge, doing that? And what, what needs to be considered in order to avoid moving into problems that perhaps could be anticipated and prepared for?
Thank you. Well, Michael is the next one on the list. Okay.
Hi, Michael Bayo, Pleasantview Drive. I applaud everyone for, for thinking about these concepts. I, I do share the sentiment that I think it would be very beneficial. At the same time, I'm a little worried that it's just happening with a lot of unknowns still out there. And it almost feels like we're, I know we need to make a decision, but I, is it too soon to make a decision for the fall? I mean, Adam, you brought up maybe waiting a year? I don't know if that's right. I mean, I'll, I'll go along with either way. My other concern, and I'll just bring this up, is, is sports. I mean, my daughter plays field hockey. I know several other daughter, children do here as well. Having my soon-to-be 11-year-old playing against 18-year-olds is a concern. And, because there's not going to be a JV team, there's not going to be a middle school team. I know they're going to play varsity, they're, they're freshmen here. So, so again, I applaud everything. I think your ideas are great. I think it's, but I think just, as a parent, I like a little more concreteness and, and understanding exactly what's going on. But again, you know, either way, I'll, I'll go with it. But it's just, I feel like I have more questions now than actually when I came into the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie? So people can hear you when they watch later.
I'm Stephanie Moynihan, and I have a current seventh grader and a fifth grader. So obviously, that would affect her. And I guess, I wrote my name down because I have more, like, questions, but there are more questions that, because this is all just kind of starting, that you can't, you're, you don't know. Like, I know how it is up there now because I have a seventh grader. So I'm like, how does it look like when the sixth grade's up there? And at first, I thought they would, sort of, coming into this, I kind of assumed that they would be seeing the same teachers as my seventh grader. But now it seems like they'll still have the sixth grade teachers that they would if they were in this building. But then, obviously, they would probably be in, or, or banned. So I, I just, I'm kind of a type A person where I like to kind of know how everything's going to go. And obviously, that, I'm sure you can't answer all of that because you had said, well, we're going to get together with, with the, you know, the, the teaching team and see what's going to work the best. So I guess I don't really have a question or comment right now. But I guess that my concerns are really just, like, logistically, day-to-day, how does everything look? And I'm not really worried about the bullying, per se, because that happens in the classrooms now. It, you know, kids getting in fights and I'm not worried that it's going to be some upperclassmen or anything like that. It's more just like, logistically, day-to-day, how's it look? Who are they going to, you know, be taught from? And how is their day going to be different than it would if they were at the elementary school and that kind of thing? So, but obviously, those questions probably can't be answered right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Adam?
I'm Adam Leiler. I'm the father of a fifth grader and, and eighth grader. I'd just like to start by saying, I really appreciate even the consideration, regardless of what, what direction it goes in. These are the types of things that are going to keep our school, these type of conversations are going to keep our school district strong. Some of the questions, I've, I've heard a lot about, a lot of the good things. Let me start by saying, I'm in support of this. But I think, to that end, it's really important that we understand what all the potential drawbacks are. I mean, we've heard a lot about the strengths and opportunities, but what are sort of the weaknesses and threats of this model? We've heard about GPA, but what are some of the other ones that we might envision? Thinking those out ahead and having that type of conversation is really important to the success of the plan. That said, having gone to a seven through 12 school in New York City, which was considerably bigger, it's the size of our town. It, it, honestly, I felt like that was the way they made that experience. It had a lot of good elements to it. Certainly, I think there were some concerns that I had. They're total intermingling, no separate hallways or sort of somewhat discreet areas. But by the end, I mean, that was a challenge in the first couple of months. Beyond that, the kids adapted. One of the things I really like about this model, and probably one of the things that most excite me about it, is when we're talking about transition in the sixth grade. I mean, it's, it's great to talk about transition, but you're talking about theory. You're not talking about it in an environment where you're learning it and seeing it and trying to manage it at the same time. In those authentic experiences, that's when the transition, the information that you're learning, really sticks. So, again, I'm in support of this. I'm looking forward to seeing, regardless of where we end up, what happens. But thank you again for bringing up the conversation.
Thank you. Anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to sign up and say something before we close this portion? Okay. So I think, I imagine we might have more questions, per se, but we might have covered some of that. Dr. Driscoll, do you want to address a little bit? I feel like we probably should have some conversation about the fact that we're coming here tonight and that we don't have a completely, absolutely ironed-out plan, in part with a desire to have transparency. You want to speak to a little bit about how you see that going?
Yeah. So the, as, as I mentioned before, this, this right now is, is kind of the preliminary open conversation about what this change could be and if folks want to do it. I, truthfully, when I started the conversation with, with fifth grade parents, I was not anticipating there being a lot of support. I, I mean, it just, you know, it's not the way things have been done for a long time. And I was, I was a little bit surprised that so many, so many families thought, hey, this, this might be a, a neat way to go and a good idea. And so I, I think, you know, coming, coming from that conversation where we were in, you know, that was in February to now end of March, I, I didn't want to put concrete plans together just yet because we didn't know if, that, if it was going to be something that we were thinking about moving forward with. I didn't want to build a schedule just by myself without having that conversation with the middle school team, with the sixth grade team. Because when I've done that by myself, I've always found that I mess it up. And having, having the input from the, the folks who are going to actually be, be teaching and be in front of the students and be working with those students is important. And so I, I'd like to, I'd like to have those, those meetings to try to develop what a schedule would be, what the day-to-day would look like for a sixth grade student in the, in, in Smith Academy. How we could kind of keep supplying the, the, the supports and the, the knowing of the students in the elementary and middle school model and kind of expand that to include the sixth grade. And I realize that's not a, that's not an answer of what, you know, what it's, what's it going to look like? Because the answer doesn't exist just yet. But that would be kind of the, the next step, is to think about, okay, if this, if this is looking like something we might, we might consider, what's it, what's it going to look like? And I look forward to having those conversations and developing the schedule and continuing that work.
So, next up on our agenda is to have a discussion about this. School committee discussions are usually between the committee and administration. And so I'm, I'm going to open it up to the committee. If you have questions, if you have observations, we're going to continue to talk about this. There's no vote tonight. We meet again on the first of April, right around the corner. I will share that Dr. Driscoll and I have had the conversation, if we were to move forward with this for next year, to put a go-no-go date. Not that, not that a decision by then, if we said no then, we could still continue to talk about it for the following year. But to put a, a date down by which we would make a decision if we were going to move forward. And so we have some meetings scheduled so that we can have that decision, so that we can continue to hear from the community and continue to learn. And so the question I asked when we set that date was, is there anything, if we made a decision by that date, would we be skipping something we would otherwise do if we waited a year? Right? And the answer was, no. So, not saying what decision we reach, but that we've, we have said that we are going to make a decision for next year by April 22nd. Doesn't decide what that decision is tonight, doesn't decide what that decision would be for the possible year after it, but that's the decision by which we need to make the decision for next year if it's going to go forward.
So, can I ask a follow-up question to that? If we made a decision by that date to move forward, but in planning the unknowns that we're unsure of right now, once we map out real day-to-day actuals, if at some point it looks like, we really should wait, wait, wait a year because we hadn't considered that, can you pull the plug on it? Or is that going to create more issues? I understand that having the date allows you enough time to work on it, to get it in place for the fall. But in doing that planning, if something came up that really gave you pause, would you still be able to pull the plug and say, we're going to hold off a year?
I, I think we could, yeah. I mean, I, I don't see, I mean, that would just revert back to the way it, the way it currently operates. So I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to imagine what something like that could be. And I, and I don't know off the top of my head what something like that could be. But absolutely, if there's, you know, if there's something significant, significant enough to be a, a game changer in that respect, then absolutely, we could, we could say, you know what? We are, we are going to put the skids on this, we're going to hold off until the following year. But I think having that conversation now and having that go-no-go date will allow for, my, my primary rationale for having that would be to, to give the current fifth grade kind of closure. I mean, they're, you know, we don't want them to miss out on kind of end-of-the-year ceremonies and, and wrapping up the school year. We want to include them in those, in those traditions so that they're, you know, that they have a feeling of closure in elementary school and are able to transition into the middle school with enough time, middle, high school.
I have a kind of unrelated question to that point, so, okay. I guess I'm a little bit, I had kind of come into this thinking it was going to be kind of similar to what Stephanie had said. Like, I was thinking that the sixth grade would come up and would kind of blend into the middle school. So that's kind of the model I was anticipating. So I was a little caught off guard when it, it became, well, the sixth grade teachers will stay together with the sixth grade. And I'm just wondering, benefits and disadvantages of going either which way? And why we're, why we're erring on that side?
Yeah, and, and again, I don't think we're necessarily erring on that side right now so much as the conversation about what it would look like hasn't, hasn't happened in that formal of a way. I could see the benefit, at least to start, of having, of having some structures that exist in the elementary school, exist in a similar kind of way, Smith Academy-esque in the, in Smith Academy. So some fewer transitions, fewer opportunities for, you know, things to get jumbled and mixed up and lost, sort of to, to support that, you know, that early, early middle school model. But again, we may sit down and say, you know, I really think it would be more beneficial to have, you know, have, have these students rotate through, you know, a more, more traditional middle school schedule. And that's, that's a conversation. And that's a conversation that I think we absolutely should have, because our goal at the end of the day is to serve all the students as best as we can.
Do we know how other sixth-through-eight or five-through-eight middle schools do it? Like, that first year, is it a transition year where they kind of keep them with a set group as like a cushion, or do they just go?
Yeah, there's a variety. So I was a sixth-grade teacher in a middle school wing of a middle-high school, it was a sixth-through-12th grade school, but it was, you know, again, it was kind of a school within a school model. And we did, we had, so I taught English and social studies to all the sixth grade. So they, there were fewer transitions because the classes were kind of more, the certifications and such allowed that, you know, we could see three groups of students in a rotation rather than four or five, which would be like in seventh or eighth grade, how it was there. So it kept fewer transitions, it let you know the students a little bit, a little bit more. Again, that was a different school, so it was a slightly different model than we would have.
Okay. I have three more questions, but feel free to tell me to stop at any point. To Jen's point, do we know of any other six-through-12th models?
We do. There are several throughout the state, as I was just saying. I worked in one up at Turner's Falls. They have a sixth-through-eighth grade school. It's under one principal. And there are several others in the area and throughout the state as well. We could get a list of those.
In fact, I did look that up. I have a list. There are almost as many sixth-through-12th schools as there are seventh-through-12th schools. And if you include the five-through-12th schools, there are more than the seventh-through-12th. So it's out there. It's not uncommon. I wouldn't call it common.
Can you speak to, I just got them off. Can you speak to how well we currently, or could we better isolate the middle school from the rest of the school?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's something that I think over the last couple of years has become a little more lax and something that this year we're working to really reinforce more. So, you know, right now, we have teachers who are in the halls to monitor the middle school bathroom, for example, to make sure that it's just middle school students using that bathroom. We put that in place recently. We will have signage coming that we can put up at the, kind of the borders, if you will, of the middle school hallway, which would be kind of the long corner past, you know, past the hallway and down around until the chemistry class in high school, to remind students not to go down there. We'll have teachers that are able to be out of their classrooms to monitor that, too. So we have, you know, the, the simple solution is just more eyes, having more eyes to do that. We actually have, we have upgraded our camera capacity as well, so if we're looking at those cameras and we say, hey, you know, this student is between classes, so teachers wouldn't necessarily be in the hall, but, or it's during class and we see someone walking down that hall, we could pull that person in and say, hey, Connor, what you doing down that hallway? That's not your hallway to be in. And we also have a designated dean of student support who's able to really focus in on those kinds of, those kinds of things and remind students more effectively and help them, help them make sure that they're following the expectations.
A piece of why that's been a bigger issue in recent times, to talk to what you were talking about of like, what are the unknowns, like, when this happens? We changed the schedule, the middle school used to have a different schedule in the high school, and so we changed it, what, was last year the first year of the new schedule?
I think it was two years ago.
Yeah, I think, because the first year was, yeah, it wasn't, yeah. And again, we did that to what you were saying for adult problems. We did that because we didn't have coverage between the middle school and high school. So if there was an unfilled vacancy and we needed a duty block, the middle school couldn't help the high school, the high school couldn't help the middle school. It also was impacting our caseloads with the middle school teacher because of the number of students versus when ninth grade hit, and a lot of our students did move on at the time to evoke, the caseloads weren't equitable, the special ed staff couldn't help because the middle school was on their own schedule. But that did reduce the interactions between middle school and high school. So we have already learned some of, now that they have the same schedule, we've created those systems that Connor was just talking about with the, what do you call it, potty duty? Potty. There's a sign up of teachers that patrol the bathrooms. So we, in some ways, we already have had to adapt to potential more interactions between middle school and high school when we made that schedule change a year and a half ago.
And have we seen issues as a result of that change?
I mean, we have seen some interaction, but I would say no major issues.
My last question was just about aftercare. You know, aftercare for sixth-grade support right now, after school? I don't know what age parents are comfortable letting their kids just, you know, come off the bus at home alone, and I feel like it's older now than it used to be 25 years ago.
Sure.
So are we, would we be able to consider having sixth graders come back to HES for aftercare or establishing a middle school aftercare program?
Yeah, that's something that I would love to see happen, is either of those options, either having sixth grade be able to kind of, you know, walk down to the elementary school and be part of it there, either as kind of, I don't know, counselors in training or something along those lines, or, and I think, I would prefer this, having a kind of more robust option of aftercare at the middle-high school, something that could combine academic support as well as some enrichment activities that students could, you know, not just sixth graders, but students who are in middle school who might be, you know, waiting for a half an hour, 45 minutes before practice starts, or who might be there for longer can take part in that to get, you know, to get that experience.
I'm just wondering, it might be Turner's Falls, but who is our, and I saw Christie's spreadsheet, which I'm sure took a lot of time, because there are a lot of districts on there. What, who would our comp be for this? Like, what district will we be looking to, or what districts will we be looking to for, as models, for what to do and not to do?
So I, that's a bit of a tough question, because we're so small that, I mean, I wouldn't say our comp would be Turner's Falls. I wouldn't say our comp would be any, any school that has a separate sixth, seventh, and eighth grade team, because that's, you know, that's the typical middle school model is you have a sixth-grade team, seventh-grade team, eighth-grade team, or, you know, so you have those teachers that meet as part of team time. We're so small that we would have a middle school team, an expanded middle school team. So I'd have to do a little more research to see who specifically our comp schools would be that have that sixth-through-12th model and are, I don't think anyone's going to be quite as small as us, but who would be comparative in size? And also successful. I mean, I want to make sure that we're reaching out to the schools that are doing it well.
I'd say also start to think about their professional development, because we already, that becomes a challenge in our district because we already are so small. We're now, if we're talking about having, you know, we're talking about having a middle school team for the collaboration and the professional development, but then we're also talking about kind of having lone soldiers teaching English. So I know that we've done some shared professional development with other local small districts just to make sure, you know, if we're going to have at the middle school level, like, this one teacher who's in charge of teaching English, that they're not just always sort of on their own.
Yeah.
I had something about after-school. First, a question from Melissa. Are there a lot of sixth graders currently attending aftercare?
I was just trying to think about that. No. I know that there's a few fifth graders, but I don't know if there's any sixth graders that are attending.
I didn't think there were any. This year, I know last year, maybe a couple, like, a handful at most.
Right, one or two.
I would be really interested in seeing a middle school after-school program of some sort that supports just the middle school with enrichment or academic supports. I know the teachers all have a day where they stay after for after-school help, so incorporating that into some kind of program, sounds like it would work. And then, I mean, because that's only an hour, right, Emily? That it's only an hour that a teacher does after-school?
Chair, if I can, I just do to answer the question. Sorry.
It's just our contractual obligation. We're certainly available for extra help, but it's different from planning and running a program.
But I think that would really help parents who aren't yet ready to have their kids come home off the bus. It would help school of choice families and working parents if there's an extended part of the day for sixth-through-eight, not just current sixth graders, but I have heard from seventh-grade parents that wish there was something for their kids to do after-school.
We've lost some school of choice families because they didn't have something after school.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead.
As a sixth-grade parent myself... ...at a basketball court outside, because he never came back, so. But it's been wonderful that the sixth-grade teachers have offered the once-a-week after-school help and they're hosting these after-school clubs. So I know that the crew of roving sixth graders, they're all responsible kids, but that's, I mean, there's quite a crew that hangs out by the library for an hour or two after-school every day. And thankfully, Ms. Lanville is nice and kind, and sometimes they can share the same space as the after-school program. But to what Jenny and Megan were saying, it's for kids, it's for younger, they know that it's for younger kids because they don't need to be watched, you know? But being totally unstructured, it's been nice to have at least two days a week where there's something to do, so.
I think that kind of program would be essential in moving forward with this kind of option. I'd also like to just throw out some of my observations. I have a seventh grader, and she approached me when she heard about this meeting. She actually offered to come tonight to speak to people. She said that she knows the kids, she knows the kids in the grade ahead of her, she knows all the sixth-grade kids, she knows most of the fifth grade, and doesn't feel like that's a huge barrier, that it's comfortable. Because we're so small, they all know each other. I mean, not great, but they know of each other. She felt that there was very, very little interaction with older students. She said that the only time she's with eighth graders is in art class or her skills class and lunch. She sees very little bullying overall, but she did say what she does see is really within her own grade, you know, because they're stuck together all the time. She says occasionally she'll see or interact with older kids through X-block or during the advisory time, these kids are walking to their advisory while she's going to hers, so there might be some minimal passage time. But she thinks it's a great, interesting idea to have them come up, because maybe she's, maybe she's on the lower side of maturity compared to some other seventh graders who are tipping more towards eighth graders, but she just felt like they would all get along very well in the areas that they would be interacting. So that's just observations from my seventh grader.
Ms. Finch?
Most of my questions are logistical, as we've already heard. I like to have like a concrete plan, so it feels hard for me. And yeah, I'm also interested in the mystery problems that will make themselves known, but I don't know that that's really answerable right now. I think it would be helpful for me if, and I'm sure this is already happening, but we can try to sort of like envision what those things would be and make plans for, you know, the things that will come up, but like, some of it is fortune-telling.
You could also reach out to schools that are current seventh-through-12th grade schools and see if they have any insights to, you know, things that occur that...
My seventh-through-12th...
That would be helpful.
I had art, when I was a seventh grader, I had an art class that had all grades with it. I had PE with all grades, you know? As a little seventh grader, I was playing volleyball in gym class with seniors, so.
Maybe we don't want to go to that.
No, we don't want that, so.
We can't currently have instructional groups that are more than 48 months. So we have, we have that, it's 48 months, but we do have that, certain instructional periods.
So I just want to talk about some next steps as we look at it. We're coming up on nine o'clock. Have we? Sure. We have some other questions, too.
Yeah, there's some. I want to make sure you...
Do you want to jump in with?
No, no, go.
Okay. Questions?
I just, you had me take notes from...
I did, and I've looked through it. I think we've hit a lot of that.
I think there's one that we didn't address that I think we should about, how much is budget playing a role in this topic?
I actually want to talk about that. That's on my list, too.
And that was going to be what I wanted to talk about, too.
Okay, I will, by far.
So this is a budget-neutral, would be a budget-neutral change. We'd be taking from column B and putting it in column A. We'd plan on having the two sixth-grade teachers at the elementary school move up to the middle school. There would be no predicted savings there. Likewise, it would be a, you know, right now, at this moment, it would be an enrollment-neutral shift for the district. So we'd be taking the current fifth grade, you know, next year's sixth-grade enrollment and moving them from Petfield Elementary to Smith Academy. So there would be, over time, hopefully, that may help with retention, and we could increase our retention that way. But as it's currently planned, it's budget and enrollment-neutral for the district.
Any changes with busing? Any concerns with busing?
Nope. No. Hopefully, we can get more people to ride the bus. We certainly have plenty of room.
Buses that we are legally required to run, I just want to know. So I think there was a lot of great conversation and a lot of really valid points that came up tonight, and I think it's a really helpful first step. I share the sentiment from those who want a more concrete plan. I think when I've heard about this, I will observe that I, in all of what led up to this, I have not heard anything that drove this that wasn't about students. And that part has been, in every person that's approached it, that's what I've heard. And so, starting with the sixth-grade teachers, that this isn't about what's going to make their lives easier, it's about what they think is better for their students. And I think that's how I've heard Dr. Driscoll address everything as well. There are some of the things that, as I imagined what this looked like, I pictured it differently than some of what we heard tonight, and I think some of that's just not defined yet. So as I think about one of what I saw as a potential upside was the ability for our sixth graders to have some looping of experience with the middle school core team. And so the idea that you would have the same science teacher potentially, I'm just going to pick on you because you're in line of sight, for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, that the ability to build a relationship with those teachers, because it's such a small group in such a small school, that to be able to have that relationship built over multiple years, not just seventh and eighth, but imagine what they could do if they started in sixth. So that's one of the things that I would like to hear clarified pretty quickly. So I, that's one of the things that I would like to hear clarified pretty quickly. I, I think the idea of learning from other programs is really smart, particularly if they look more like us. But also to hear, what did they go through? Harvard, Mass. has a sixth-through-12 school that does exceptionally well. They're one of the highest-ranked school programs in the state that for, and at public school, and would be in this pattern. Like, I kind of want to take a field trip and see what are they doing and how does that work? And, and what can we learn? And so, I, I think we're all eager for more information, but I think tonight needed to happen so that we could start having that happen. I'm deeply appreciative to the community who's not only shown up to ask questions, but many who have written in, to the teaching staff who has taken their own personal time to really dig in on this as well. So as we close out tonight, do you have closing comments you want to make?
No, I just, I wanted to, to talk a little bit about some of the trends that I heard from the conversation with, with the wider fifth grade as well. Specifically, one, one comment. I think this, this gets to something that was shared earlier tonight and something that we've seen and heard a bit about, the idea of letting, letting kids be kids before they're, go to Smith Academy. And I, I mean, I would argue that they're kids at Smith Academy too. They, they, they are. And specifically, I think we're, you know, we're shooting to, 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 to do just that, to allow them to be kids at, you know, a developmentally appropriate setting and way of, way of doing that. The, the biggest concern that I heard among families that I talked with was about recess. Was about, will there be time for recess? And, and that seems like a pretty low-hanging fruit that we could be able to address structurally. And I would argue that not just sixth grade could benefit from recess, but I think middle school as, really, anyone, adults too, could, could probably benefit from recess. But specifically, you know, the, the middle school age group. That may be a positive shift that we can see coming into our model that we take from the elementary school, that we're able to, to do that. So I think there, you know, there are, are positive shifts. And, and this feels like, you know, if we go this route, it feels like a, a pretty exciting time to be able to look at our middle school as a, as a middle school within a school and see what we want to keep from the model that's been working so well over the last several years. And then also say, okay, what, you know, now's the time if we're gonna make any, any shifts to the middle school model that could be things like including recess or, you know, other structural changes that we can, we can have those conversations. And I think that, you know, it's, it feels like a pretty exciting time to do that.
Can I say one quick thing? I just want to say thank you to the, the teachers that, that came out and for the information. But it also, I have like a, someone who's been in education for around 20 years, but has bounced from district to district. To hear that we have teachers that are, have been here for so long that the years that you've put in here, having that information come from you is, is a lot more valuable and, and really was helpful to me in, in making this decision. So thank you for staying. I love that you like it and, and really value your, your experience and your insight. So thank you.
Very much agree. Okay, with that, it's nine o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn? I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Thank you, everyone.